All right, at this time I'd like to call the February 11th meeting of the Pots Grove School Board to order. I'd like to have the color guard present colors. Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may take your seats. All right, Secretary, we'll note the rule, please. And we did not have an executive session since the last meeting, so there we are. We're not planning on one after, so there's that. So that brings us to public comment. Did you have any questions from the comments? And we have a crowd tonight, so I'll ask if anybody would like to make any comments before we get started for our meeting this evening. Hearing none, I'll move on to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Boyer and the Student Coalition and their advisor, Mrs. Amanda Kelly, along with Officer Andrew Millard, to present the Student Coalition.
Thank you. Kids have prepared over the past couple of weeks for the presentation, but just to give you a brief history of the Student Coalition. So my first year at Pots Grove, Chief Wheatley, who was the chief of police of Upper Pots Grove, he had approached me and he wanted to start a leadership group that he was very intimately involved in. He kind of led the group, he met with them, and you know, his vision was, over the next year or two, it would evolve into something bigger. So year two came, and Officer Millard came to the middle school, he kind of came on board, and then Mrs. Kelly got herself involved into the Student Coalition and kind of took it to really a different level and exceeded expectations that we had. So I don't want to steal their thunder, but I want to turn it over to Mrs. Kelly and the Student Coalition.
Hi, I'm Amanda Kelly. If you don't know me, these are some of my wonderful students that stay with me pretty much every single week after school for the past, you know, one to two years for some of them. And you know, if you could assemble just a group of go-getters that care about their school and the community, like this is it. So I am really lucky to work with them every week and also with our Upper Pots Grove Police Department and Officer Millard. We've kind of put together a presentation that gives you an overview of what we do each week and, you know, what's important to us here at school, what's important to them as students and community members as well. So you know, I hope you enjoy it. If you have any questions for them at the end or for me, you know, feel free to chime in. And we're going to try to project our voices so that everybody can hear us, but if you can't, just kind of let us know and we'll speak up, right? Okay, thank you.
So the Student Coalition is a group focusing on concerns among the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students in Pots Grove district to aid in a relationship building and foster a better learning environment.
The Student Coalition's goal is to create social and emotional learning, to create unity through communication, to serve a positive part throughout our school and also through the community and to lead the community's spirit.
Hello, everyone. My name is Isabel April and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Chandra Smith, I'm a seventh grader.
My name is Tommy Boyce, I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Adam Lawrie, I'm a seventh grader.
My name is Ben, I'm in eighth grade.
The Laurel House is a domestic abuse shelter located in the U.S. in our homes, whether it be your spouses or just your homes in general. It's located in North Tappy, and we don't give the exact location, but it's a safe area that people can shelter.
So we did a fundraiser, and during ninth period, we collected many different items such as household items, groceries, and cleaning supplies. Over the course of a couple of days, it was for the whole school, whole middle school, and we donated all the items to the Laurel House.
So after we collected all the items from our library, we had to deliver all the items in a small bus and a place for them to just leave them there.
And after a few days of delivering the items, we received a card from the Laurel House just thanking them for everything. They said that they had used all of the supplies that we had given them, within the few days that we had given them to them, and they said that they were very grateful.
And I'm sorry, Tommy, I think that our police chief actually brought the domestic violence shelter to our attention. We didn't really know much about it as a club, so he kind of sat down with us and talked to us about how it really directly impacted students in the Pots Grove District or the surrounding Montgomery County area, and they put a lot of time into kind of brainstorming to get ready to appeal to the community to donate to something that they might not even know anything really about.
So this year, we're going to donate these supplies during the springtime, because after the holiday season, they kind of get forgotten when it comes to giving donations. So after the holiday season, they're going to give supplies, so we're going to donate these supplies.
So we needed to, later in the year, last year, we needed to figure out what we would do for our spring fundraiser, and we came across the backpack program because it really helps the community and the children in the schools. And it also, one of the members in the Student Coalition was impacted by the backpack program. Her family was going through a moment, a time where they would have trouble with eating enough over the weekend. So the backpack program basically helps families get on their feet and gives children a backpack full of food for over the weekend, and they'll bring the backpack back to school to be refilled at the beginning of the week.
At the end of the night, the main thing is that we set up a table outside so that way they would be part of the challenge, and we had bars outside because we did a donation to give the supplies or giving the two percent of their bill to the backpack program to raise money off of it. We had a donation jar outside, and the officers and other people helped serve the food because they were proud of the kind of other people who were going to be serving the backpacks.
We had did this at Hilltop, which is a small business owned by the family of a student who actually goes to the middle school.
After the fundraiser, I was actually, me and my family were actually really moved. So my family and I decided to join the actual backpack program as volunteers. So it's actually a very fascinating experience. So every Wednesday, we'll go to Pottstown and we go to local shelter, and what will happen is when we walk in, there's like almost a board, they say how many people need help and also how many people that they still need to help with in the week. And in the back is a large pantry that has all the food, and it's basically like a factory line sort of. So like people will grab the food and then will give it to people to make sure that there's enough good food again for people to be provided for. And then there's people that bring the food into the next room, give it back into backpacks, which are actually color coordinated based off the school that you go to. And also, my dad, also volunteers, that every Tuesday will come to the school and he'll deliver backpacks for us.
We chose to have the fundraiser at Hilltop because one of our people in our team actually owned the restaurant for their parents, so not only did we help out the backpack program, but we also helped out for a company to buy it and go to customers and eat it for certain people.
During the winter, we ran a ornament yard for the family. We gave a tree to a family who did not have any trees to decorate the holidays.
We also, when we went to Potts, and tested all of the ornaments and lights that we collected from other local women, and we gave the tree and a box of all the ornaments to give to the family, because we felt that decorating the tree is a big part of like the holiday spirit and that they would love to do that themselves. But we also put the lights on the tree because we felt that was a little bit stressful for them.
So also, what we're saying this year, we also did a Christmas cards for soldiers drive because we wanted to do something else that was, you know, like experience and stuff. And we wanted to do something free because it is the holiday season and people tend to know they have to spend so much because they know that they're going to be spending a lot on Christmas gifts and stuff. So we came up with the idea to make cards for soldiers, which were free. And so as you can see here, we made ornaments cards, and actually, we came up with the idea because Ms. Kelly and another student in our Student Coalition have brothers who are free.
We worked together for two weeks to make the cards, but when we were done, we had Ms. Kelly send the cards to the red drops, and from there, I was holding some cards.
So we have a lot coming up, as you can see. Recently, the NHS, which is another group at the middle school, they hosted a winter coat drive, and we helped out with that. And we also recently finished working on Valentine's for children at CHOP, just to help make their day, because we know that people at CHOP are probably not having the best day. We also plan on revisiting the Laurel House, like we said before, and continue keeping an open mind to the community and seeing where we can help out some more. We're really looking forward to working at the Alhouse of Freedom, which is basically this nature preserve, which is really close, like four or five minutes away. It's 17 acres of land that's basically dedicated to just sharing with the community different aspects of nature. It's a beautiful place, and I have a lot of experience there. For the past two summers, I have worked as a counselor at a nature summer camp that they host for four-year-olds and fourth graders.
One of the main reasons why we chose to want to work on the Arboretum in the future is because we think environmental preservation is a big thing that we actually focus on. Even if we might just spend a day working on those, it's something I would choose.
And like Isabel was saying, they do a lot of nature and insects and the arboretum running, but at the same time, the Arboretum does fun nights and we do fun activities with the community. I remember that I used to go right across the street from the Arboretum, so a lot of times, me and my friends would plan to go over there on Friday nights, and we would take the night hikes with the Arboretum, and then we would sit around the campfire and just roast something.
So last year, we sponsored an assembly which brought in for, for the eighth graders, just to learn about like how their actions can have consequences, and it was a really great experience for the eighth graders. And we were actually lucky enough to sit in and see the assembly, and we plan on doing that again this year because it was very enlightening to the eighth graders.
And I think like one of the best parts of the club is that all of this is generated through conversation with the kids. So whether it's Chief Wheatley coming in, or Mr. Boyer saying, you know, we might need help in this area, or it's the kids saying, hey, I've worked at the Arboretum before in the summer, it's a great place, we should check it out. They generate so much valuable conversation, and I just think like the best part of it is seeing them like take these things and what direction they take them in. So it's been quite a pleasure. So we've, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on. We'd love for you to come out if you have any time. Mr. Boyer, I know sends information out to the community and to parents, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
And just being a police officer in Upper Pots Grove now, like getting involved with the Laurel House, like for me, it was really cool that I worked with, although unfortunately, I worked with them a lot. And so every time I go down there, they remember me from Pots Grove, and they remember our group of students here from Pots Grove that did that, because I can tell you right now, we were the first middle school in Montgomery County to actually think it out on our own and go forward with something that they, like they were blown away by the amount of donations and goods that we brought there. And they're all on board for us, helping them out in the spring, and just the group of work, these individuals put in, they definitely show me that they are peers and role models, not just in the school, but in the community. And you know, it wasn't to work with them all.
Thank you.
So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them.
No more questions, but I'm going to ask you to hold on for just a minute. Go ahead, please.
I just congratulate you. It's great to see young kids giving back. That's basically what we all do here. Just a quick question, how can we find out all your activities that's going on?
Well, I, I do, Mr. Boyer does a great job of using the Pots Grove Messenger system. He'll send information out, but a lot of times, we meet on alternating Tuesdays and Wednesdays. We'll kind of brainstorm for a week, plan the next week, and then I would say maybe monthly do something. So this is like a small snapshot, but I would be, you know, happy to share more information through our office or through, you know, email if we're doing something that, you know, is coming up that I think is, where we have extra support or even just a highlight of the students.
So anybody who's been around me for more than about five minutes knows this is the kind of thing that goes right to my heart. Mrs. Kelly, Officer Millard, Mr. Boyer, thank you for organizing this club. It's, this is outstanding. This is exactly what I think of when I think of Pots Grove. Where are the parents of these children? Thank you. When we talk about our mission statement, we, you know, we talk about educating lifelong learners, we talk about giving back to the community, we talk about these words, and we talk about these buzzwords. We try as the school board, we try as the administration to capture what we do to motivate our administrators, to motivate our staff and our teachers, you know, to keep going. It's worth it. This is what we're here for, this is why we do the things we do. And sometimes you lose heart a little bit. It's hard sometimes to realize it's worth it. There are great kids out there, there's lots of them. And some days, you lose sight of that, and then there's days like this, and you realize it is worth it, it's all worth it. There are those bright lights out there, and there's a lot of them. And it's nights like this that you say, I've loved this job, I love what we're doing. And you know it, with all the boys soccer team and all the things that they do every year with Phoenix Hill Hospital, and they give back. And we've all got that experience, and we've all got the stories. Our school board reps that are here, they come to all these meetings and sit through all the things that we do, and they're giving back in all the ways that they do. And it's just another example, this is why we're here, and this is why we do what we do, and we're glad to do it. And this is the shining example, and I'll tell you what, you're not going to ever stop doing this. This is a pattern that you're going to carry for the rest of your lives, because it's a habit that's ingrained in you, it's something that's in your heart, and it's not going to go away. And it's been put there by your parents, and it's going to be reinforced, and it's going to be something that you're never going to stop. And I think, I'm very grateful for it, and I'm proud of you, and I'm proud of your parents, and I'm happy to be a part of it. So thank all of you, and have a great night.
Thank you.
If we could ask Christine Hires, Christine here? There she is. Tonight, on behalf of the school board and the district, we'd like to, how about turn this over this year? We'd like to recognize Christine Hires for placing her in Montgomery County Suicide Awareness Poster Contest. This is her poster. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you wanted to talk a little bit about the poster and what it meant to you, that would be great. I can always speculate the story behind it, but it has tremendous beauty.
Ms. Frost, about suicide prevention, and I was thinking about all the memories that you make of it and how important it is to your life, and I was all the memories that I have experienced, and it's been trying to help, and it's been used to let everyone play.
So thank you very much on behalf of the district and the board.
As we move on with our agenda this evening, we'd like to go to Section 5, Approval of the Minutes, 5.1. We're asking the board's recommendation to approve the monthly board action minutes for January 14th as presented.
Make a motion to combine 5.1 and 5.2.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 5.1 and 5.2. Does anybody have any questions on 5.1 and 5.2? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
I move that we accept the high school counts, the middle school counts, and the cafeteria counts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive accounts for audit. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $4,510,578.59 for January 2020 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Does anybody have any questions? No. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. All right, very good, so ordered without objection.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for January 2020 as presented and file it for audit.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report and file for audit. All those, all right, does anybody have any questions? No questions there either, an incurious group. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, all those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection. Sir, your report.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 9, the report of the superintendent, I'd like to turn it over to our student board reps to talk about their visit to West Pots Grove Elementary.
So last week, Brenna and I had a visit to West Pots Grove with a group of kids, and we asked them, what does Pots Grove do great, what can Pots Grove do better, what do you dream Pots Grove can be, and what can you personally do to make Pots Grove a better place? So for the first question, what does Pots Grove do great? They responded with teaching, after-school clubs such as fitness, computer, and bowling, Westy the mascot they raved about, who's a cheetah at assemblies for encouragement. They have tags on students' bookpags for the best of the treat each month. This month was self-discipline. Students follow the Falcon Four, and there's extra help provided if need be. For the second question, what can Pots Grove do better? Students replied with more science classes, more spirit days, implement more time with computers, like typing on the keyboards, and make a school garden.
I want to stop you there just a minute. What was that first thing?
It was more science class.
More science class. Just want to emphasize that a little bit, thank you very much.
For the third question, what does Pots Grove can be? The student said, everyone is kind and nice, everyone is happy, the school meets the needs of each individual, everyone helps their teachers, everyone is respectful to each other, and everyone uses positivity to lift each other up. And for the last question, what can you do personally to make Pots Grove a better place? The student said, help your teachers, look out for one another, be kind to everyone. They said the school is a place where everyone is accepting of one another. They said you can clean up your trash, and you can use kind words.
So I have one question for you ladies. We've been doing, you guys have been doing this report now for one year and two years. Have we gotten better? I always hear you come to the exact same questions and virtually the same answers come through. Have we done a better job since you started?
I would say that we have. I think the students, the students love to rave about their school. They love to tell us all the awesome things that they're doing. They love to tell us how they use the iPads and how they use the computers and how they have so much fun on the playground and how much they love indoor recess, and there's just so many, so many great things that they have to say that I wouldn't even think about, especially the younger kids, you know, me being so far removed from elementary school. It's really sweet to hear them talk about how much they love their peers and how much they love their teachers, and I feel like there is more of that since I've started.
I have a question on clarification on the science part, just out of curiosity, do they, I mean, there, I realize it's K through two, so science then could be, it's a broad spectrum, but do they, you know?
They were talking about like plants and rocks, along like creating gardens, just doing experiments with that, trying to see like where they can go with that, because I feel like they don't touch, they said they want to just have more exposure to that.
Okay, so like hands-on exposure, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, like the whole garden situation.
Okay, and then I do have a question. What was the thing about the tags on the backpacks? I didn't quite...
Yeah, so each, the kids told us each month they have a character treat, this month being self-discipline. And the student that exemplifies a high excellence of that character treat gets a little tag on their bookpack, kind of raising them up, saying like, hey, I own this treat, kind of thing.
Thank you both, appreciate that. Moving on to action items for personnel, 10.1.
Make a motion to combine 10.1 to 10.8.
Okay, we have a motion to combine 10-1 through 10-8, take them all as one. Does anybody have any questions on 10-1 through 10-8? No questions? All right, very good. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to Item 11, action items for business. We're asking the board to approve the 2020
We're asking the board to approve the 2021 Montgomery County Intermediate Budget and Membership Services as presented.
Let's combine 11.1, 11.2.
I actually have to have a itemized vote for the MCIU thing, so let's.
That's right.
If we can refrain from combining, that would be easier.
Thank you.
Did I have to be an individual voice vote or an individual vote or a roll call vote?
I mean, as long as, yeah, I mean, I just have to tally it.
As long as you can record the vote, you're fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 11.1, the budget vote for the MCIU.
I'm sorry. So a motion for 11.1 by itself would be in order then.
So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 11.1, the MCIU membership budget. All those, I'm sorry, are there any questions on 11.1? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Vote is eight to zero, so you can record that that way.
Moving on to 11.2, Budget Transfers. We're asking the board to approve budget transfers for January 2020 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the budget transfers? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, the result is the same if two separate votes. 11.3.
11.3, the new website slash community engagement platform. We're asking the board to authorize administration to contact, to contract with Blackboard Incorporated for an updated website and community engagement platform as presented.
We have a motion and a second on the new website and community engagement platform. Sounds very interesting. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Just what's the lead time of getting implemented if approved?
The question from Mr. Leach was, when this gets approved tonight?
After it gets approved.
Excuse me, I'm right here. After it gets approved, what's the implementation timeline?
Training sessions scheduled is approved on February 24th. Or 19th, I'm sorry.
February 19th?
Correct.
Two and a half weeks. Okay, are there any other questions? No other questions? Okay. There are no other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, seven to one. Very good. Moving on to Section 12.
Moving on to Section 12, Action Items for Education. 12.1, Conference Attendance, PDE Data Summit. We're asking the board to approve the conference attendance item as submitted.
Make a motion to combine 12.1 through 12.4.
Oh, she beat you. 12.1 through 12.4, all those, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve 12.1 through 12.4. Are there any questions on 12.1 through 12.4, conference attendants? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Well, the JOC, it was interesting at our meeting, remember we only have four board members, I was the only officer returning, so we were all really getting acclimated with one another. So there's a lot of, just getting to know, how do we work? Lot of questions that way. We're gonna get the new board members on board to get a tour. It's the most change I've ever seen. But one thing I will say, we're moving right along. We do have Skills USA, we had our district competition, and we have three Pots Grove students who've gone to the state competition. So congratulations to Zach Lewiski for metal tech, Megan Grace for sports medicine, and Corey Nifer for advertising design. So these kids will go right to states and congratulates our Pots Grove students.
Okay, moving on to Item 14, Committee Items. What we're asking at this point is 14.1, Operations and Facilities Committee, the minutes from the 114, 2020 meeting as submitted to be approved.
I'll make a motion to combine 14.1 and to 14.3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the various committee meetings, 14.1 to 14.3, but not 14.4?
I'm gonna report on it.
Oh, you're gonna report on it? I'm sorry, my mistake. Okay, 14.1 to 14.3. Are there any questions on 14.1 to 14.3? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And so ordered without objection.
Mr. Parker, the Policy Committee?
All right, we started by looking at Policy 333, Professional Development, but that was tabled at the request of the administration because of another, they're putting together the Comprehensive Plan Committee and that's gonna affect the way this policy looks like. So we pulled that off for now. Policy 808, Food Services, was brought to our attention because of a change in the state, but because of federal regulations, we couldn't do anything with what changed with the state. So that's taken off the agenda, we're not gonna review 808. 805.1, 225, 805.2, all have to do with law enforcement in different ways. We've been looking at that for the last couple of meetings, I guess. We cleaned up some language, tied the policies together, and moved that to 30-day review. 209, Health Exams and Screenings, another one we've been looking at for a couple of months. We had done some research due to some concerns in the wording as recommended from PSBA. That wording was cleaned up, we verified with our solicitor, the way, you know, with what we came up with to make sure it followed the state's expectations, and it did. So we moved that on to 30-day public review. New Business, 113.2, Behavior Support. We were asked to look at that because of the AEDY audit. One of the things that came out of that was, we were directed to add specific language to that policy regarding restraints and seclusions. So we had some discussion on that, changed some of the wording around, and moved that to 30-day review. Any questions? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Moving on to New Business.
I forgot to mention on my JOC report, one of the big highlights, February 29th is an indoor car and Jeep show and craft show from 8 to 3. They'll start up with a pancake breakfast, all kinds of crafts, and you get to see the students get a tour of the building. How did I forget that? I don't know, but thank you for New Business.
The only thing I'll bring up for New Business was earlier, we had such a huge amount of people here for our budget meeting. And we started with the budget and actually, the budget's coming in at a nice start. Obviously, we have a lot of work to go, but we're hoping that we're going to get to our proposed goal of 1% or less. So we're looking good right there.
I just have one thing. I was, received a call the other night and was invited to be a bingo caller from the PTA at Ringy Rocks. Absolutely incredible night. They were so filled up, they had to move to the high school. I got there and every single parking spot was full. So what an awesome job to the PTA and, you know, as we know, the culture of a school like that, to have that kind of energy only comes from the top. So thank you, big shout out to Dr. Jones, great job to everybody that night.
I just have one quick thing. We were just mentioning here that whenever we're at the middle school, we can't hear squat. Is there any way that we could have these meetings in a different room in the middle school? I mean, it's every time, like I could barely hear what those kids were saying, I really wanted to hear what they were saying because I thought what they presented was awesome. It's just the acoustics in here are terrible.
Put them in the speakers, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, and you guys are like way back there. So that's, that's it. It was just, just an observation slash request.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. We'll take a look at that moving, moving forward with that. What I wanted to add, if I could, is I know, Mr. Parker, you brought up some concerns at our last meeting regarding the junior ROTC and attendance. Yeah, attendance with that particular group, as well as attendance and parent notification, there was two pieces.
Yeah, and I don't know that it's specific to that group, but when there's off-campus activities or testing or whatever.
So we, so we did a little work, you know, investigating Dr. Ziegler and his team at the high school. And he had an opportunity to speak with the major at the program. And, you know, they're gonna work together with our office staff to do a more diligent job, if you will, with attendance. And also, we're gonna do a check with me, check with you type system when Pottstown doesn't have school. There was some, that was a spot for us too, to close that particular gap, which we're going to do. And also, Dr. Ziegler and his team, along with his office staff, is looking to get phone calls out to parents at noon. Some of that delay was because of our PM tech and our Western Center taking attendance for the PM students, and then that information had to get back to us. So our goal is to expedite that process. They're working on it this week and hopefully, the goal is to start it next Tuesday when we come back from the President's Day weekend, to have that expedited. We're now, parents will have phone calls around noon. So, so let us know how it, how it works out in your households and give us some feedback and that'll, that'll help us move it forward. So wanted to just update that. Thank you.
Okay, if that, is there any other new business? If not, then we move on to public comment, our second public comment opportunity for this evening. Has anybody been stimulated? Has anybody been intrigued? Is anybody been motivated to give us any public comment? If not, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And everybody else can leave.